Being seven thirty...
Four.
Three. I'm looking, I looked at the... We'll open this meeting. Mr. Pierce, do you have a motion on the minutes, please?
I do, I do. This is chairman. I move that the Community Planner Commission vote to approve the minutes of April 4th, 2023 as written.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Jeremiah Johnson on Zoom. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor, please say aye, and there will be a roll call vote.
Aye.
Uh, Jeremiah Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Aiden, aye. Mr. Ryan and, no, Mr. Carroll and Mr. Rudloff are absent. Alright. Daniel, do you have any info for us about ZBAs?
There are ZBAs.
Let's go through those.
Yep. Start with, there's a seven woodcutters, the first. They're looking for a variance. Due to the shape of the lot. Regularly shaped front lot line along the cul-de-sac and side lot lines. The rear lot line is very irregular, consisting of several line segments along an existing dry stone wall. Okay, so the building inspector has determined that each of the line segments along the dry stone wall is a rear lot line. So they have to have 50 feet from each of them, and they would like to have a portion that is 36 feet. And they've included a plan here.
So this is in Residence A?
Yes.
I didn't hear all of that, but what was...
Oh, I'm sorry. So this is in the new subdivision on Woodcutter Lane. Because the rear is irregularly shaped, the building inspector has determined that there are, that each segment is a rear yard and has to be the full 50 feet. There's a portion of that yard they would like to have a 36-foot setback. And they've shown here on the plan.
Now which one are you on?
The first, uh, seven woodcutter.
Oh, okay, I'm on Sylvia Road now.
Oh.
Yeah, I started at the top too.
Yeah, I started at the top.
It goes in alphabetical when they, when they put them in here, it's alright. It's not you guys.
Sorry, I thought that was the first one.
It's alright, it doesn't matter.
Woodcutter, okay.
Alright.
Those were on the same page.
That makes more sense.
You got that, Jeremiah?
Yep.
Alright.
Okay. Williams and Sprages.
Let's see, that's the driveway. Very confusing on where the corner of the house is.
Looking at the map, the backside of that yard is partially the golf course and partially another house with that stone wall kind of separating them all. But I think the only person who would be adversely affected by it would be that house on, you know, on the backside there. But it doesn't seem like it would really be that big of a deal.
Yeah. Well, the issue is this, you know, this is a brand-new house in a lot. And it's, I always have troubles giving variances for setbacks on these things.
Yeah, it's a unique piece of, it's a unique orientation of the house too. Cause it's kind of, instead of it being, you know, kind of, I guess, parallel to what you think the backline should be, it's kind of more in there the long way.
Yeah.
Kind of creates that short setback in the back. But looking at where they've got the water drainage, on what I would think would be the rear of the property, seems like the only kind of way to kind of reasonably use it in that kind of orientation at least.
Yeah. Of course, this is going to the ZBA, so we're really, we're just gonna give a thing. And normally, we support the building inspector on these things.
Well, this is a variance, so he hasn't...
Oh, he hasn't, he hasn't a pond yet, okay. But it's the back corne, is that back corner that's too close? Is that right, Daniel?
Um, it must be.
Yeah, cause the back corner looks like it's close to that irregular line.
Yeah, yeah. And it's like...
A lot of grading here, a lot of grading.
Lot of grading, ton of grading.
Hope that was taken into account in the drainage calcs.
You wanna bet?
Well, I'm, I said I hope it was.
I hope it was. I don't wanna bet on that.
I don't see any, what do we got for grade lines here, so?
I mean, it goes from 123 to 114, 110. Wow. 113, eight there.
Yeah, that one, that original 100 grade line is up 12 feet, 14 feet.
Yeah.
I mean, 10, 10 feet and 12 feet, right along that, what was the original 100 grade.
And they get storm, do you see the storm scepters in there, Warren?
Storm tacks, yeah.
Yeah, on the, on the front left corner of that house.
Yeah.
They got their 1500 gallon tank, and then there's a storm scepter.
Well, the tank is for the septic system off to the right.
Right. Storm scepter's gotta be what, for the roof drains?
It's for the roof drains, yeah, yeah.
And they're within 100-foot buffer of something, must be the wetlands. Drainage easement, yeah. Wow. I don't know. What's your thought, Warren? Oh, wait a minute, maybe it's... Is the, is that the front, how, what's the, what's the setback they want?
36.
Cause I'm looking at the front corner. And the front left corner says 35.5 on. You see that, just, just past, see where the storm scepter is?
Cause the front only has, well...
Yeah. 35.5 it says from the...
Cause I can't, I can't read any of the other numbers on here that they want.
35.5 to that corner of the house to the lot line.
To the lot line.
Yep. It's a lot of grading in the back too.
Oh yeah, they're up 22 feet in the back.
Twenty-three.
Or almost.
Well, 23 is 14, so, six, seven, eight, nine, oh, about nine feet.
Well, the 100 goes right through the middle of that hill.
Well, the 12 goes maybe along the very back line, but then 23 goes up close to the house.
Yeah.
So there's, you know, whatever.
He's got two storm scepters or storm tacks in here.
Yeah, he's probably collecting them from a couple different areas, so, the roof drains. This one's not called out though, is it? Oh yeah, there it is.
It looks like he's got a...
Yeah, it's called out, I can see it.
He's got a retention pond back there, too, Warren, you see it?
Yeah. Well, I mean, because they're close to the greens, which we know what the water's like over there.
Yeah.
So I, I, uh, I know that's why they're infiltrating them. You know?
Yeah, but I'm...
One of the problems, one of the problems with these that has, all the time I've been on the board, I've, I've asked a question a number of times is, there's not, usually not a, um, a design characteristic for it. In other words, you know, what, how good, how, what is the gallons per day, I mean, or today, and what is the, you know, what is the capacity of it?
Yep.
In other words, what storm does it overflow?
Yep.
So a lot of times, they're only designed for a two-year storm.
Yeah.
A lot of them tell me that the towns only require you, that you design an infiltration unit for tw, for the two-year storm. And some of the towns are a little pickier, I've seen them go higher than that, maybe to the five-year or the 10-year storm, but that doesn't really, you know, that, that, that means that at some point, it's gonna overflow.
Right. And I mean, it's gonna go right out, it's gonna break through anywhere that they got it, it's gonna go right out to that back.
Well, the idea behind them, and the other thing that they're supposed to be, um, they've gotta be two feet above seasonal high water too. So that, one of the other things I see a lot is on these, and you have to ask the question, is did they, did they, is, did they do a soil test somewhere near that, where that, where that system is? So that they know that they're in fact, they're two feet out of the water table, so that it will actually, it'll actually perk, it'll actually handle the water and...
Right.
Set the water away, because if it's in the water table, it won't help, it's not gonna work.
Well, the, looks like the bottom of the stone bed is at 116.50.
Yeah, but what we don't have on this is what was water table called, it's not a town, I don't see a test hole anywhere near there.
Nope.
So I don't know what the water table calling was at that particular point.
Would it be helpful to have the subdivision plan in the folder? I can drop it in, cause I, I mean, you can look at the original topo, which is not that different, I mean, I mean, would, do you want me to drop it in?
See, nobody, one would, one would hope that there'd be some, um...
One foot.
During the peer review, somebody would ask that question, because the septic system obviously goes to the Board of Health and they, and they, um, and there's a design, you know, there was soil testing done, a design done and so forth. But it always makes, always made me wonder when you look at these, when they show these systems and they don't have any test hole data to substantiate the, to show that these infiltration units will handle, or what they handle, what their capacity is.
Do you want the stormwater report too?
I mean, this is the one we just did, right?
Yeah, and it doesn't look different from, I mean, I'll put the subdivision plan in there. I mean, I don't remember what the stormwater report said about this lot and where that water was going, cause it was a few years ago, but I can put it in there if you wanna see it.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't isolated.
Cause I remember when we did, when we were doing McIntyre, where we do it up behind the greens there, and we, you know, they did the, they did the, um...
Although, uh, McIntyre Woods.
Yeah, when they, when they, um, did all the calculations for the, for the runoff calculations and everything, they, they didn't work, and so they had to go back and put infiltration change units like this in four or five of the houses in order to make the...
Catch the roof drain.
Yeah, and to infiltrate them, not because, in some places, like, you know, sometimes you're working, like, I know, done work like at Burlington or something like that, they, anytime you do anything new, you always have to infiltrate your water.
Right.
They don't want, they don't want any of it running off, they want it all infiltrated, so they're to put it back into the water table. But this isn't being done to protect the water table, this is being done to keep, in order to make the, the drainage calcs work.
Right, right.
There's a big difference.
You know, and, and, and when you're talking about McIntyre Woods, the, that, the homeowner thereafter added tennis courts...
Yeah.
And all kind of hard surfaces, which then ran down the hill.
Yeah, yeah.
Where to?
That's right, right to the...
And we had all that problem there, remember?
Yeah. Well, they defeated themselves when they went to the, when they, um, created all that impervious area.
Yep.
And, um...
They put, they had no place to go with it.
After doing the, yeah, so that's kind of the, that's kind of the problem, so... I mean, it's, if you design these, if you were to design these for the amount of flow that you would get out of a 25-year storm, it would, they'd have to probably be massive.
Yeah.
Cause look how big the septic system is next to it, that's only 440 gallons a day.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's closer to the, to the pond that they got out there.
Yeah, yeah.
If you look at the bottom of these, of this tank, the one to the front left, it's two and a half feet above the cellar floor.
Yeah.
That could be an issue right there.
No. No, no.
Alright, well...
The higher you keep that system up from the ground, the better, so I think that's, that's, it's done, I, I mean, I think there's a lot of grading going on here, and I think they're working with what they got, so... So, uh...
Forty-five thousand square feet too.
The only thing I might, only thing I might beg, the question I might beg is, what is the seasonal high water there? Cause in that, it, cause if seasonal high water, if that tank is that high because they're trying to get it away from the seasonal high water, then, then, um, then yeah, that is, there could be a problem, cause that means that the basement would get water.
Yeah. I'm just concerned, you know, this is the height point, and they're worried about water up there.
Yeah.
Where's all that, where is all that water gonna go? Gonna go one of two places, if you're gonna come downhill and go Fairview, to those homes there, or it's gonna go to the greens.
Yeah. Well, again, they, you know, they're just looking for a variance for that right rear corner.
Yeah, it's what it looks like.
So, um... And that's supposed to be 50 feet, and they only got, only wanted to do 36.
Yep.
Well, I think like, um, like Jeremiah said, I don't see it really impacting anybody else, you know, I'd be more concerned about, the, the people in this new subdivision. I don't think anybody outside of there is, is, and of course, the developer's still in control of all this, so...
Yeah, he's, he sold two of the lots up there.
Yeah, but it's sort of like the, you know, what we ran into, um, over there off of Park Street, when we, uh, start, when they started changing the grading on the land and everything started, well, I don't think in any detail, that started to create problems. And we agreed to something that I don't know that we should have, so...
Yeah, we probably shouldn't have, you're right.
Yeah, so this is, uh...
I think we just leave this in the hands of the...
Yeah.
zoning board and the abutters, and they own two-thirds of the abutters. There's three abutters to this property, right? Now, this is...
See, they got all this information about what this is, the depth to the stone and all that stuff on this.
Yep.
But, um, no, there's all kinds of numbers here, but there's no indication of the capacity of it, or it's a...
Right.
What it can handle.
Exactly.
What storm it was designed for. Nothing. And while it says, and there's also no water table calling right here, which, knowing what the bottom of the bed is, is fine, the bottom of the stone, that's fine, that's a good number to know.
Where's the height of the water table?
But what's the water table, is the water table two feet higher than that, or two feet below that? There's a lot of, a lot of numbers here, but none of them really do you any good.
Trying to figure out what the depth of the isolated, uh, wellon is, and they don't say it.
It'd be kinda hard to...
94. Yeah, it looks like 94 is probably the, the lowest point of that wet little isolated wetland to their left.
Yeah, that isolated wetland, yeah. Well, they got arrows showing the drainage, the catchment area going down the hill there.
Yep.
So this looks like they've drawn a catchment area in that they've, uh...
Yeah, I think they did.
That they're, uh, they're indicating that that's, uh, that catchment area, that's where the water is going. Not, not going towards the house, but going down that, down that, uh...
I don't know where the rock floor is.
Down to that isolated well, in, in, uh, isolated well, and the question is, is they, uh, is this where it went before, and is this where it's supposed to go?
Right.
But I mean, theoretically, all the drainage calcs have been reviewed and approved, so... Who did the drainage calcs on it?
Um, so it was Peter Blaisdell was the engineer, so it, uh, it was Williams and Sprages.
They were viewed, they were...
Did they do, did they do the original engineering on this subdivision?
Peter Blaisdell is the designer of the original subdivision.
So Dave has reviewed these?
Oh yeah, yeah, it's part of the subdivision, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have the peer review letter, I mean, I can drop that in too. I put in the, the subdivision plan.
Okay. Alright, um, I think we have to go along with following the law and what else can we add in there?
Well, I mean...
The abutters, right?
I mean, this is a new house, right?
Yeah, but there, there might be an abutter next to that, like at five.
Well, that's not what, what I was gonna say, is if this is a new house, the idea behind this whole thing is to, the appeal is to get a variance from, uh, for hardship, and so...
Where's the hardship?
Well, they're creating the hardship, that's the, that was, that was gonna be my point. If they create the hardship, they, is it really a hardship?
Yeah, I don't think so.
So... Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I don't, again, I don't see any, I don't see any harm in it other than, um...
They could turn the house like 90 degrees.
Well, I, but the other thing is, it's also precedent setting, you know?
Yeah, that's the problem, it's a precedent setting.
Yeah, so I, I agree with Jeremiah that there's not really a, there's not really harm anywhere, but I, but I think it's a difficult precedent. So I think your original statement that we just, that we, that we support the building inspector is probably...
It's not an appeal of the building inspector's decision, it's just a variance.
It's just a variance, so...
Yeah.
You know, and I, I don't know what...
We haven't really done a lot of varying on new construction like this.
Yeah.
I mean, and new subdivisions, I mean...
No.
What's the point of having rules if, if they, if they can just go around them, you know?
Right.
And they're creating the hardship, it doesn't pre-exist.
Yeah, I don't think this deserves to have a, to have a...
Should I just put that comment, that this is a brand-new subdivision, new construction, and that, um, you prefer to see the house?
There is no hardship right now, they're creating their own.
Yeah.
They could reorient this house, make it smaller, make it deeper, something.
I, I don't remember us ever, uh, you know, supporting a variance on new construction on a subdivision.
I don't remember.
Like that, because, and I, and I remember some of those, uh, some of the engineers having to go through hoops to make sure that they have the house square to the front, and the right amount of room in the back, and...
And the frontage had to go all the way to the back?
Yeah.
I don't think the frontage goes all the way to the back of this, does it?
The frontage goes all the way to the back of the lot?
The 50, has, the 160 has to go all the way back 50 feet?
On a cul-de-sac, um...
Wasn't that what it was, Warren?
Um, it has to be 50 feet back from the house, like, not the whole frontage, but the whole front of the house.
Yeah. What, what year was this subdivision in?
This subdivision, um, uh, 2019 got its final approval.
So they're in here somewhere.
You know, what we can do is say that we don't recommend variances on new construction or in subdivision, in new subdivisions.
Okay.
Okay? Simple as that.
I agree. Do you agree with that, Jeremiah?
Yep.
Okay. Whole bunch of people up there.
I'm one of them, you know that.
Well, they don't, this is just, this isn't a hearing, this is just...
Right, this is just...
This is ZBAs, if they have comments, they need to go to the ZBA.
Right.
For their comments, so...
I, I think these are the abutters to Anthony Road.
Yeah.
Okay. What's, what's, what's the next one, Daniel? Maybe we can get this, uh...
So mine are in reverse, so I had Woodcutter first, I, whatever you have first, we can do next.
Do the middle one, which is...
Two Sylvia, three Hemlock, which...
Yeah, um, Hemlock. That was the middle one. Is that okay with you, Warren?
Yeah.
Uh, chickens.
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 Six chickens.
That's, that's...
Six chickens.
No roosters, neighbors?
Yeah.
Am I correct? That's what we, that, that's what we've done in the past.
We've done in the past.
Even show where's, could have the, the, uh... That's in my neighborhood, kinda.
Anything else?
And you got, well, you got one more, right?
There's a little yellow thing, that's the, uh...
That's the coop.
That's the chicken coop, huh? Yeah.
Probably behind his grass. Did you get those comments, Daniel? Was that alright with you, Jeremiah? On three Hemlock?
Uh, yeah, yeah, the chickens, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. I got, gotta remember you're there. You got that, Daniel, for three Hemlock?
Neighbors and root cover stairs.
Yep. Okay, and two Sylvia, and then we'll, what's, what's that one?
It's an addition, a side yard setback variance, um, they say they can't build on the other side because of the, or, they're limited because of the location of septic, so they're looking to build into their side yard setback and have an 11-foot setback to the side.
Two Sylvia.
What was this drawn anyways? There's no date on it for this, when he drew it.
You, um... I don't see anything now.
I wonder what the addition is? Is it a bedroom? It doesn't say, or maybe it does say.
It looks like a garage. 20 by 24 and a half is garage size.
Yeah, probably, it's probably right where his driveway comes today.
Could you pull him up on your Google map there, whatever?
I can. Two Sylvia, right?
Yep.
Well, it does seem like there's at least a tree line between the properties in the direction that it'd be going, but, um, but that neighbor does have a pool back there. You know, who knows how much tree coverage is really tree coverage, but...
Yeah. Well, this driveway is to the right of the house, Warren.
Yep, okay.
So... I don't, you know...
Well, if he's doing more bedrooms, he's got septic system issues, so...
Well, that's what I was, that's what I'm thinking, if he's adding bedrooms, and the septic is back there, they're gonna have to reconfigure it anyways.
Well, maybe it's just a family room.
Maybe.
Says family living space, but I don't know what that exactly means.
Yeah, I don't know what that means either. I, I'm gonna say the dining room is to the right of the entry door, looking at the window. I just don't know what the hardship is here, other than they want to build a... I just don't know what the hardship is here other than they want to build a
Well, it is really, I mean, upon, you know, where the septic is, it's behind the house, so kind of looks like that's the only side that could be you know, expanded. They put an addition of that size on, so. So I think maybe you just stick with neighbors on this one.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
There's not much we can do about it.
I think that would be the, uh
Be the pertinent thing to do. All right, so you got that, so I guess we should
You can do Anthony Road.
open that public hearing and then
Yep.
do what we need to do. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing for seventeen Anthony Road and three forty-six R. Havel Street. And most of my folks on Zoom, I believe, are here for that meeting, is that correct, folks? If you are, just unmute yourselves. And I can count.
Well, you probably need to simply tell them
Well, let me tell them that
Yes, that, that we're not gonna, that they, not gonna hear it because they're not ready.
Right. So folks, the the plans were done, but our consulting engineer has not had time to review them for us, to see if they're applicable to our subdivision rules and regulations. So we're gonna continue this meeting and also we're short two members tonight, or three members actually in-house, there's only two of us here. Um, so we're gonna continue this meeting to another time certain, Mr. Pierce?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the community planning commission vote to continue the public hearing for seventeen Anthony Road and three forty-six R. Havel Street until Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at eight P M.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Jeremiah Johnston. I'll take a roll call vote on this. Mr. Johnston?
Aye.
Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Hayden is aye, and Mr. Carroll and Mr. Redloff are absent. So our next meeting on this will be May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, at eight P M. Thank you. What else do we have, Danielle?
Uh, the accessory dwelling unit bylaw, um, and that's it.
And that was just a discussion, correct?
Right.
So um everybody's seen this, right? Did
Yep.
It's been in, it's been in the Dropbox, I mean, we haven't had a discussion on it since the last time we had a discussion, which was about a month ago. Um, we discussed some changes, when I wrote up a memo, I described what the changes were that I made in the new draft. And then after that meeting, um, Mr. Redloff and the building inspector and I also discussed further changes at Mr. Redloff's request. So those are, um, I differentiated those changes because those were not ones that we had discussed before, so they're in the memo. And have a lot to do with definitions of things, um
Which are, I think, are real important.
Yeah, mhm.
Are real important. So, um Jeremiah Johnston, do you have any real issues with this?
Uh, no, I mean, I think that in its present form, I think it represents, I think, a reasonable compromise, um, you know, of, of a lot of the concerns that people have shared, including myself, so I think it's good and I agree with like the, you know, edits that in terms of tightening up the language with the definitions and stuff like that, you know, the internet would always love to capitalize term. So, uh, yeah, I think, I think it's positive stuff.
Okay, all right, and you know, we're, we're, obviously what we're gonna have happen here is we're gonna, we're gonna, uh get this tightened right up and ready and then we're gonna have a public hearing on this, correct, Danielle?
Right, the next step would be, uh, when you want to schedule the public hearing, it would have to be, you know, within six months of the October town meeting.
Okay, so after June?
Mhm.
Because you don't want to get that confused with anything that's happened at a June town meeting.
Right.
Um, and then, uh, we do that and then we would put it on the warrant article. Any changes, we would create them if anything came out of the public hearing. And then we would add those to the, uh to the, um I guess you would say, uh, it's a CPC bylaw. Uh, and then put it, get it into the warrant for the October town meeting. Warren, did you have any issues?
No, I think we've, uh, we've run this one down pretty hard now.
Yeah, I think it's a good place to start, we gotta start somewhere. Let's get, let's get some history under our, under our feet. Um, and then, you know, if we, we have to, we go make some, uh, changes to it, be them small or large.
If we run into problems with the way it's done right now, we can always go back and make changes, so.
Right, right. You know, once we get some history of what's going on, if it, if it's working, if it's not working correctly, if it's, if it's I don't know, if it's too narrow, uh, but we can make those changes and bring it back to town meeting. See if they support that, and it wouldn't be, you know, ten years down the line and probably be
We may find that the way we have it crafted, not as many people will take advantage of it as you might think.
Well, I know, I understand that. I understand that, so. All right, so is there anything else?
Well, out of curiosity, out of curiosity, um, would we open this up for a public hearing before or after we find out whether or not the select board is happy with it and supports it? Would the, would the next step not be kind of running it past them?
We could, but it, you know, they, they can also join us at our public hearing and put their comments on that. No, but I understand what you're saying, Jeremiah, it's, it's, yeah, we usually run those things by them so they can, they can give their comments back. Um, but, you know, at some point, we have to you know, we really have to take this and, and go through the public hearings, uh, you know, cycle and then maybe as an article, yes, Liam?
I, I just was gonna suggest that maybe if we could just let us see it.
Yeah.
You know, just to have a heads up and know
Heads up on what, what it is, you know, and like I said, with the public hearing, if there's some real issues come then, that's when we're gonna make changes to this document, because after, once we put it together, you know, when, when David and Ryan can opine on it with Jeremiah, um, we're gonna, we're gonna create, you know, not a draft, but we're gonna create the, the format for the bylaw and then we'll have, we'll schedule for the public hearing thereafter. And we're gonna do that definitely after the June
After June.
town meeting. Just, we wanna, we don't want to confuse folks, including ourselves, about what's going on what.
We have a lot going on. But yeah, just a suggestion that, you know, if we could get it
I can actually
Time soon, just to review it and
Sure.
so we can have our questions and
Right, right.
Yeah, let me, I can just send you the link right now to
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna change it much now, we just want to just get Ryan and David's taken and then we're gonna you know, it'll be, it's done, basically. Is that good? Are you all right with that, Jeremiah?
Yep.
Okay. So you send that off to select woman, Liam? Don't ask me, yeah.
Do you really not know?
Huh?
Like, do you really not know?
No, I don't.
Wait, I, I'll
That's it?
I'll send a link off.
We're done?
Yeah.
Any else? Debbie? Warren, do you have anything? Jeremiah, do you have anything extra?
Uh, no.
Uh, is there anything happening in town? You know, that we don't know about?
Not since the last time I saw you, not, not that I'm aware of, Debbie, I don't know if you know if it's happening that No.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine, all right. And our next meeting is, is May sixteenth, right?
That's right, because of the election.
Right, I may be here or may not be.
I won't be.
You won't be here?
I'll be in Italy.
Ah, good for you. All right, well, we're not
But I'll be thinking about it.
I'm sure you will. Gonna close this meeting tonight, thank you very much.